Good evening. I would like to call the March 3, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I do not have any announcements. Is there anybody here for anything that is not currently on our agenda? Seeing is none. We can move right into our first item, which is the Historical Society update and request for involvement by Shirley Cooney.
I think you can pass over that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then we will move to item two.
Could I just say to a later date, or the issue's resolved?
To a later date.
Douglas Youth Baseball and Softball Propose Changes to Soldiers Field. We have Brett and Nicholas.
Just Brett tonight.
Just Brett. How are you, Brett?
Good. How are you guys?
Good.
Good to be here. Mr. Bonner, are you hearing me?
Oh. You were going to be anonymous.
We try to, we try hard not to acknowledge Tim.
So, I am Brett Argle. I am a board member with the Douglas Youth Baseball and Softball. So, tonight, I am here to talk about some changes that we would like to make down at Soldier's Field. We've already been before the Rec Commission to present those changes. I actually had some, I had a folder with some nice black and white folders, all mocked up with the changes we're going to make, and that folder is MIA now, so. But, I'll walk you through the changes anyways. We have a wall running on the right field of our, of our large field, if you and the eyes are familiar with it. And it's about, probably about a three or four-foot level for most of it, and towards the end of the wall, probably about, you know, 200 feet out from home plate, it jumps to about 11 or 12 feet, right in front of our concession stand there, which is probably nice for blocking the concession stand from foul balls or whatnot. It also blocks our concession stand workers from being able to see anything, what's going on in all our fields. Or if you have a kid playing on both our small baseball field and our big baseball field, that, that wall is just kind of in the way. So, we're proposing to take that, that 11, 12-foot section down to four feet and just having the same level of a wall all the way out, and also extending netting down in place of the wall instead, to still provide the perfect protection. This will improve the sightlines kind of across the board, hopefully get more volunteers in our concession stand, generate more concession revenues.
More tickets for sales.
More tickets, yeah. That's it. You know, it's, it's all about us trying to, trying to generate funds how we can and just have it a more enjoyable experience down there. The other part that would go with this, that we have a shed kind of at the end of that wall, in between the two fields, the small field and the big field, for those that are familiar, also provides a bit of a sightline issue for us. So, we'd like to be able to move that shed. At the Rec Commission, we had proposed a particular place, just really slotting it about 15 feet kind of across the, the walkway there, up against a fence. Some of the members of our, our board don't really like that area. They're trying to find some other areas to move it to, but again, nothing really there. You know, changing the look and feel too much of, of there is improving sightlines, nothing historical about any of these materials. I know, I know that it's a historical field, but the wall's there, I think around about 30, 30 years old.
Is there a dedication plaque on the snack bar side of that wall?
There is a dedication plaque on the, on the concession stand building.
Okay. It's not on the wall?
Not on the wall. Just right now, the wall has just a "Welcome to Soldier's Field" sign on it, and one other sign, which doesn't really have, I think, have a ton of significance. I think the, the original idea with that bigger wall was to do much more with dedication plaques and stuff like that, and just hasn't really materialized.
Yeah. I think it did at one point, and it just, over time, had worn out.
The other question I have is, how is this going to affect the homerun ability down in right field?
Um, I-
Are we going to have more or fewer homeruns?
It doesn't affect either way. We love that. That's a big field, so.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. But no, this is, this, this wall's in foul territory, doesn't really impact that at all, so. Any thoughts, questions on that?
And funding for the work?
Uh, we, we plan to do it ourselves. As far as taking the wall down, and we'll, we'll purchase some netting and put that up ourselves. Moving the shed is, is a, it's a rather large shed, which actually was donated to us from the schools, I don't know how many years ago, you might know, Tim, but a dozen years ago, so, something like that, but-
Twenty fourteen-ish.
Yeah.
With them when the new school happened.
Yeah. And was it, was it GBI that supplied the crane at the time, or was it-
Yeah, they helped.
Yeah. So, I think we're going to reach out to GBI again to see if they can help us with a crane to be able to move that.
We don't have any issues with it.
Sounds like it's all good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion on this?
Make a motion that we approve DYBS, the baseball organization in town, their plan to improve Soldier's Field by taking down that large wall that is no longer needed.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I just follow up on a couple of other items that you guys have addressed previously. Thank you for approving our parade route. I don't know a lot about it, but it's, it's the brainchild of Nick Mason, our, our new president. I think it's great, I think, to, you know, create a little more excitement around the league, a little more pompous circumstance around that, so thank you for that, and sorry we couldn't be here a couple of weeks ago for that. Another thing, I think you guys are aware of, we're, we're going to be putting up some new signage, and we have some funding to put up some signage underneath our scoreboard. We have a poll running currently on our website, just to give you guys some, an idea of kind of how that poll's going. We've got about 35 votes on it so far. The leading candidate is "Freedom is Never Free." Right now, we gave them four choices, I'll read them all off to you. Second candidate is "This Will Remain the Home of the Free As Long As It's Home of the Brave," that's at 29 percent. And third, we have, "We Don't Know Them All, But We Owe Them All," at 23 percent. And lastly, we have "Sweat More in Peace, Bleed Less in War," at only 3 percent. So, we're going to let that run about another week or so, and then, you know, we'll let our-
Give me a roll, finally.
Yeah. So, yeah, no, we thought it was, it was good. I think it was Tim's idea, and it's, you know, hopefully help him drive some traffic to our website, which is always good for us, too.
Yeah. douglasyouthsports.com, if you'd like to weigh in on-
Yeah.
-an additional Soldier's Field improvement.
And if I could just, I'll do one more second. We, we do have one other item, and we haven't brought it before the Rec Commission yet, and I'm not sure if this might even be a town administrator question. We have some pine trees that run along our driveway entering Soldier's Field, and we also have power lines running there, and those pine trees are starting to interfere with our power lines, or at least reward that they're going to start to. Is that something that the town can help us out with? Is it a national RID situation? Is that something we, that we need your permission to do ourselves, possibly, if, if we feel that we're up for it?
If there's lines running through them, you don't want to get up there and try and cut them yourself.
Yeah. Yeah. Should we reach out to you?
Oh, yeah. I'll ask around.
Okay. Great. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brett.
So, item three is the liquor license change of management and officers for the Whitemsville Fish and Game. We have Edie Carwell here. And you'll be taking over as bar manager, right?
Correct.
And all the paperwork's in.
Why not? Don't have enough stuff to do, might as well just take on something else.
You were supposed to bring us all beer, Edie.
Sorry. I can run up there and get some, if it's allowed.
No, I mean, this is all straightforward stuff. We've done a million of these, it's just a matter of making sure all the records are updated with ABCC.
Yeah, I've been unofficially doing it since August, because Steve moved back down to Florida, so, and decided that he was going to give it up, so.
You made it official.
That's it.
And they even included their board meeting minutes.
I was reading those.
Well, I mean, I don't see any problems or concerns, and if there was, I'm sure Suzanne would have pulled them out in the application process. So, I would entertain any motions, if anybody's willing to make them.
So, move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in, oh.
I was just saying, for the interest of our minute taker, who made the second?
I think it was a tie.
Right.
It's a tie. Do we want to give it to Cortez?
I think so.
We'll give it to Cortez.
This is important stuff.
It is.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's all set, Edie.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edie.
And I'm sure if there's anything, Suzanne will be in touch.
Yeah. She's been a couple of times, but hopefully it's all lying about me.
Okay.
Look out for the hooligans that frequent that place. Said, "Look out for the hooligans that frequent that place."
Oh, yeah, I know. I'm trying to get them all into mine now.
Unsavory characters. One in mind.
A bunch.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Edie.
All right. So, we have the town administrator's evaluation and possible votes. Earlier, well, actually, last week, I sent out evaluation forms, as Suzanne did, to everyone. I have gotten everybody's results on his evaluation that came back in. We had 10 points that we had evaluated the administrator on that were communications, direction setting, standard setting, representation of the town and Board of Selectmen, personnel management, collective bargaining, operational management, fiscal management, asset management, and risk management. I will say that, for the most part, several members of the board gave Matt all fives. There was a couple of fours that were in there that are still, in my humble opinion, exceeds expectations on every single one of these points. Based off of that, I mean, I recommend the evaluation usually goes directly into working on Matt's contract, which I think we would have set up for our next meeting.
Yep.
To review compensation and things like that, but I personally reached out to some of the department heads that reported into Matt and got the same feedback that I had expected, which was Matt exceeds expectations on pretty much any and all level, and a couple of them said the best boss that they've ever had. So, Matt, I hope to feel-
You gotta get out more.
Huh? You're too easy on.
Good grief.
But personally, I, like, I was part of the evaluation process, and I can't say it enough, you have been beyond a breath of fresh air to the town of Douglas.
At a critical time.
At a very critical time, and I attribute a lot of the current stability and success that we've been having to your guidance and input and willingness to change the way that we used to do some things.
Right.
So, and brought some, definitely some great ideas into the town itself, and look forward to many more years of this, Matt.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the board's compliments. It's also back to you, though, because the relationship between a Board of Selectmen and a town administrator is not a casual thing. We have to work on it, and to the extent that we are civil and we pursue options with an open mind and we have fact-based conversations, we can do a lot for people in government. And it's only when we break that down when things really start to fall apart, so. We've all dealt with some difficult issues over the last three years, but we've been managing to get through them because we're able to find that common ground and work towards good solutions. And last, but definitely not least, you know, I've said it privately, Mr. Chairman, you have the most exceptional group of directors you could possibly hope for in your departments, department heads, that a town of this size could hope to attract and retain. So, I owe it, we all owe it to those people who work the departments every single day, not just our public safety chiefs, don't forget, but the highway superintendent and adult social center director and everybody else, Bill Kondof, the town engineer and community development, and of course, Gene, who, you know, keeps us all on the straight and narrow, which is actually pretty extraordinary. We tease her a lot, but the fact of the matter is, it's a pleasure to work with somebody who's so detail-oriented and makes sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. It helps the town's reputation with auditors, with the people that buy our bonds and everything else. So, it's really, it's just a great place to be, to be a town administrator, so I thank you for the chance to stay another three years.
I'd just add that I've had the opportunity to work with Matt negotiating some of our labor contracts, and he strikes a great balance, which is harder than you might think to do, of taking care of the town's interests, but making sure that employees are treated fairly. And on at least one occasion made what probably under other circumstances would have been a difficult negotiation into a much smoother and easier one, where I think everybody walked away from the table very satisfied. So, that is more difficult than it appears sometimes, and he is the master at it.
Anyone else?
I just concur.
Yeah.
Look forward to having you for another three years.
Numbers aside, just know that I think you obviously have the support of the board explicitly, and I wouldn't say that if this last three years weren't really, really above and beyond what I and this board would expect as a administrator, so, thank you for your work.
Much appreciated. So, I think we would, well, we'd really need to vote on for this. We wouldn't have to make a vote until we get with your contract again, which I intend to have that on the next agenda, so we will continue to move rapidly towards ensuring that we can secure you for another three years. All right. Brings us to-
Are we, um, contract discussions next week or two weeks from now? Or is there a subcommittee of any sort being put together, or to work out a contract, or?
I think that-
What are you thinking?
Well, the contract that we have in place, the only thing that we would look into, it really would be maybe changing some of the verbiage towards compensation based off of attainment of goals. You know, kind of make it where it's more of a-
Tim has a valid question. I don't think we should get ahead of ourselves. Do we want to do this, the board as a whole, or do we want to make a subcommittee before we get into the nuts and bolts?
I think it would make sense to do a subcommittee on it. I mean, I just, I think the current contract that Matt has in place is pretty good, and there's only minor revisions that I would look to do for it that would only, you know, give him additional earning potential based off of objectives. I mean, that's kind of where I sit on it, but it would make sense to have a subcommittee to sit down, because obviously I would want Matt to offer some feedback and ideas and details on what he feels-
I was going to get to that as well.
Good goals would be.
I definitely want input from, from Matt into what he thinks should be in there.
Yeah.
Not that you'll get it all, but we should get your input.
Yeah. Well, I would be glad to serve on the subcommittee if that was the decision to go. I would like to explore the longevity kicker of some sort, and maybe look at what others have done. Three years is great, but I think this town would really benefit in sending you in some capacity to really make Douglas a, a nice long stop in your career.
So, would you be interested in sitting on that?
I certainly could do that.
Or Hal, or? I don't think we can have three of us on us. Well, we could, as long as it's open meeting. Do you have any interest in sitting on a subcommittee as well, Hal?
Sure.
So, how about if I put you three guys with Matt with some input on some of those things?
We can do that, open meeting, you know, changes the discussion a little bit. No?
Nope.
No, because you would have to, a subcommittee is its own thing. So, if you have a majority, if you have three and you have, that's the committee. So, two is a quorum of the subcommittee.
Okay.
You have to post it, but you immediately go into executive session.
Right.
Okay. That's, that's fine. That's great.
Does that work for you, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Mike, you good with that as well?
Fine with that.
Okay. So, I'll let you guys hash out the details on when and where and-
Can talk after the meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So, we have that part done. That was easy. Budget discussion with community development.
Good evening.
Evening, Bill.
Everybody. You got handles.
It's a sharp tie you've got there, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, fellas.
Did I see, was Carol here for this, too, or?
I don't know. They have an EDC meeting tonight.
Gotcha. That's why she was here.
So, no big surprises. Our budget's in line with what the five-year plan had encompassed last year. We are carrying forward the 1.75 percent COLA for the salaries in two steps for staff. Expenses are basically the same with a slight increase from year to year. And not much else on the departmental thing. As you know, just for background, the community development department includes not only the staff in my office, but the, under the umbrella are a number of boards and committees, including planning board, conservation commission, open space committee, economic development, zoning board of appeals. And on a side, we do manage the building facilities construction committee budget for them. We do work closely with them also. So, the first page is simply the department budget, the salaries and expenses associated with the department.
Bill, did you feel that we captured the added cost of your big plotter and the cartridges for that?
Uh, I, I think we're going to be fine with that, Matt. You know, based on the trends of what we're using now, which is, I think we'll be fine with that. On the second page is the breakdown of the expenses for the various boards and committees. Conservation, again, all of these remain in line with the five-year plan that was established last year. We're obviously looking at the 2021 column. Conservation remains balanced. Open space is balanced. Planning board also is balanced. The zoning board is balanced. And economic development committee, we do have a minor edit. Last year, they requested $5,000. They're also going to request $5,000 for this fiscal year. There's been a spike in activity, I think, relative to years past with regard to economic development, and we want to have the ability and resources available if we need them.
So, it was requested for this year, but they haven't spent very much of it yet.
Okay.
Because that's not where they're at. So, as Bill noted, it'd be 5,000 in 2021, and then Mr. Manaric was in my office later in the day and said, "Why don't you make 22, just for purposes of the forecast, 3,000, and just graduate it back down?"
Okay.
And the purpose of that would be if we found ourselves in a position where we wanted to apply for a grant or something under great time pressure, and we had to go get CMRPC to give us extra hours, you know, those kinds of activities, to make sure we didn't have to go to a special town meeting or move money around. It's okay for them to have that flexibility. If they don't spend it, it closes back to free cash. It's not a lot of money.
So, just a turn back, right?
Yeah.
Change reasonable.
Yeah.
Our activities are going to be moving forward. And then the last page is the permanent building committee, which is the building facilities construction committee. Again, we have minor increases for the salary line item, which is the meeting minute person, and they do carry a nominal amount for expenses, which is consistent from year to year.
Yeah, it looks pretty flat. Right. It's about as straightforward as you can get, isn't it, Bill?
We like it straightforward.
It's the engineer in you.
Bill, if you had to tell people how you spend the majority of your time, what do you think it would be?
It's a shared thing. I wouldn't say there's a majority in any particular category. I'd say it's 50% supporting boards and committees in review of applications, guiding the process, and then 50%, I'd say, on town projects, like the green projects that we have going on, the police windows, the HVAC, the library, weatherization, things like that. So, we have municipal side, it's about 50/50 of what I remember on it.
And what's the update on the Cedar Street Bridge?
Cedar Street Bridge is about, last, about a week ago, is 25% civil made to mass DOT. It's my understanding that over the next month, they'll reach 100% design on the Cedar Street Bridge. They'll also have to do some permitting with the conservation commission, because it's obviously a stream crossing. Once that's done, we're going to put it out to bid. That's probably two to three months out. This annual town meeting, we may need some money set aside under a warrant article for some land acquisition or takings. Some of them are temporary, some are permitted as a, as a result of that project.
I don't have any questions. Bill, you make it too easy.
Good. I hope so.
Is that killer $3,700 expense budget? Yes.
Yeah. We have the review and public reading of the DeCaro resonate letter and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I thought it would be advisable for the board to reach out to resonate. First of all, to congratulate them, they had the meeting they were always hoping for with the cannabis control commission, where they actually issued one final license and three preliminary licenses or conditional licenses. And that being the case, it would be timely only to recap the arrangement between the town and resonate with two different host community agreements, also to set expectations for the budget process, because we have been very conservative in estimating when this revenue stream would begin. We've been pushing it out and pushing it out based on the realities of that building project. The entire space is under a valid CO, certificate of occupancy, except for the kitchen, the production facility, so that, that's a specific license within the scheme that CCC uses. That may take a while before that's fully-
When you say kitchen, the area of processing rather than-
Process.
Kitchen for the helper.
Well, no, no, you know, the kid, by the kitchen, I mean, they're making the edibles and the other food-based products.
The extraction kitchen, I think.
It's extraction and then making the-
Makes it sound homie.
Yeah. It's, it doesn't feel that homie when you-
You may find Betty Crocker in it.
So, they've made some changes to their extraction methods, and it's all been reviewed by the fire marshal, and there's some work that needs to be done. But if you recall, there is only one milestone in, in either host community agreement that is tied to the operation of Douglas, and that is when the first plants start growing, it's $10,000 right off the get-go. The rest of the payments are tied to the operation of the retail establishments, which will be open regardless of whether or not they're selling product from the Douglas Grow. So, if you're watching the news, you're seeing there's a really nice picture of a really nice space with a ribbon cutting, and Peter's there cutting the ribbon, celebrating. They're not open yet, but they will be very soon. The onus is on resonate under the agreement to provide notice to the town when those places open. Now, we can take notice of that, because it's going to be on their Facebook page, for goodness sake. But after six months, they'll owe the town 40,000 under the adult use agreement. Then at the one-year anniversary, they'll owe another 40 for adult use and 100 for medicinal. And then in the out years, medicinal will be 150 and adult use will be 80, so it's 230. So, that's all summarized here on the second page of the letter. We're sitting out the schedule of payments, but there's no misunderstanding. There is only one out clause in the host community agreements. If they can't make their payments, they can negotiate with the town, but they cannot unilaterally reduce it. It would have to be an amendment that's agreed to in writing by both parties. So, that's my recommendation. You just send it to just put that marker in place, now we're all communicating, we have the same expectations.
I think it's timely to send the letter.
Yeah. I would agree. The only other thing I found in there, I think it's important to everybody understand, our finance director, the board, and the folks at resonate, is that you put an offset clause in the HCA. So, if we're taxing them, or the DOR is expecting to send us 3% of their gross sales from the Douglas facility, that's offset, that money sets the HCA payment.
Right.
So, the HCA payment is a floor, not a ceiling. So, that's how you guys protected the town. You have a floor, but once all of that obligation is covered, if they're still paying taxes, because they're doing very well, that additional revenue would come in. I think for budget purposes, we would only budget the floor.
Anything above and beyond that would just-
Be extra revenue.
Additional revenues that would go to free cash. And there would be more dollars with story- And there would be more dollars with stories, right, Gene?
Morgan has some long stories now.
So if you just, if you approve of the letter, we'll send it, but we'll print it out for your signature because I think the board should sign it.
I agree.
I agree.
All of us or the chairman?
All of you.
Okay.
We want to make a motion of sending said letter out.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Made by Mike, seconded by Tim for the purpose of minute keeping. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved minutes and possible votes, which I didn't see any minutes in here.
Was that open for discussion or no?
The...
I just had two questions.
Sure.
Is there gonna be a...
Could you, if you don't mind, just for the record, name and address?
Scott Duncan, 106 Gilboa Streets.
Yep.
Do you want to come up?
Is there gonna be an open meeting about their extraction process, their new design and plan?
Because it's gonna be butane, I believe. And that's gonna be very concerning.
Yeah, there's no open meeting process for that. That has to go by the fire marshal and the fire code. So they have already done plan review and given feedback to the developer.
Okay, only because everything's gotta be explosion-proof and that building's not explosion-proof, so...
No, the building isn't, but the technology is pretty sophisticated that's being installed. So it all has to meet fire code.
Well, you know, it's just, that's gonna be bad if something happens.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring that. And then after the five years, after the, whatever it's called, is that gonna be gone? Or do they still have to pay after the five years?
After the five years of the HCA, they'll still be beholden for 3% of gross profit.
Yes. All right, I just wanted to make sure that they weren't gonna be able to skate away in the sunset.
No.
No, no.
No, that'll be continued revenue.
State law limits our ability...
To go past five years.
To go past five years with an HCA. So it's not a decision the town makes or mandated by what the law says.
Okay. So, and I think DOR covered the talents by saying at minimum it will be 3%.
Right. Okay. But just real quick back to the butane thing. Is there any way that, you know, anybody's gonna be notified that that's going or anything?
When they actually start operation?
Yeah, of that. Because that's gonna be a little, I don't know if you guys ever watched, you can have the best technology. I don't know if you've ever watched any of the YouTube videos of it.
I can't say as I have. I know the state fire marshal's been at it quite a long time. And he's gotten a lot more exposure to a lot of these grow and extraction facilities. I think on that aspect, I would, I would put a lot of faith behind what the fire marshal says on it. I haven't actually watched into it. I mean, a lot of the parts of like marijuana facilities is that they're not doing a lot of out in public because it's a, it kind of defeats the purpose of their business. They're trying to keep it low-key, not advertised, no key signs and...
No, I know. I just, you know, only because all the electronics in there, then they get the butane and not having a sealed room can cause major issues.
My understanding, I thought the extraction kitchen was self-contained.
Yeah, it's a module that's self-contained. The, all of the fixtures in the room will have to be changed, the sparkless...
Yeah, explosion-proof.
Which is explosion-proof. High-hazard sprinkler type arrangement. And then there are storage permits. And those storage permits trigger inspection requirements. You know, like you, Mr. Duncan, I would have hoped they would have stuck with CO2 and not butane just because of what happened in Providence. But what you gotta remember with the Providence mill, that was a total hacker operation. Where the guys were just, you know, they had plastic sheets hanging for walls. It was, and they were playing with butane in a really flammable old building. This has really come a very long way. And I don't know if you've been inside, but you've certainly seen the guys going in and out. I don't think they're gonna let you inside. In fact, I don't think they can bring you in.
I don't want anything to do with it.
Take my word for it, the technology is, they have a lot riding on this. And so they really, you know, the lives of the people that work for them as well as the millions of dollars have invested. So they've invested in pretty extraordinary stuff. And the fire marshal is requiring those things to be installed. The plans are a public record. So if you want to see what the fire marshal is, is requiring, we can provide you with, with that. We can't summarize it for you. We'll give you the record in the form that it's stored, but if you know your way around the plans, you can look at them.
I have toured the facility. And to say state-of-the-art is an understatement. I don't think that there's anything safety-wise or technology-wise that hasn't been thought of, cared for, and planned ahead on.
Understandable, but, you know, there is...
You know, as a neighbor, you have genuine concerns. And I, I completely understand and appreciate that.
So, that's all. I just wanted to talk about that, just bring it to the, you know, I didn't know where that was at, so...
But if you want to come in someday when the building official's offices, best time to catch him is Tuesdays and Thursdays when he's in the office and just ask to look at a copy. And he can walk you around and see what's up.
All right, thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Okay. Approved minutes, which I don't have.
I don't see any.
Do you have any?
They're on me.
I got an email on minutes, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's just pass them over for now.
Yeah, passing over minutes. Brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, a fair amount of what I've been working on is reserved for executive session. Just a few other things. This is evaluation season for department heads. We have a couple of contracts to renew. I take the same categories that the board uses to evaluate my performance and roll them down. I change the point value because there are different levels of emphasis depending on which department we're reviewing, but that's in process now. I started building these templates last year. Didn't finish because we got into the town meeting season and the budget. Some of our department heads hadn't received an evaluation since 2004, so we're catching up. What I'm doing is, with those that I got done last year, it'll be a one-year review. With those who may be under contract, who didn't get a full review last year, they'll be reviewed for their entire contract period because their contract period would be co-terminous with mine. So I've had the three years' worth of being able to work at it. Quick reminder, tomorrow night, if you're into this kind of thing, I kind of am, so I'm gonna geek out. I don't know if I'll be able to make it, but I'll certainly watch it if cable carries it. We're getting a talk on the health of the forest and in particular, the oak trees that have been devastated by so many insects and drought and other things. And in Rhode Island, there's been a tremendous amount of concern and a lot of culling of the green space that really runs from Burryville, I always say Burryland, it's Maraville, down to the water. That's, you know, the forested part of Rhode Island. And this really was devastated to the same degree as Douglas was. They've been removing thousands of trees and taking them away. And we may not have that luxury. DCR may not be as proactive. But one of the points of the talk is if you don't want to tell your children the only way they'll see an oak tree in a museum is in a museum, then you, there are things you can do to take care of the trees in your yard and protect them, help them grow and, you know, in a balanced and intelligent fashion. So that talk will be tomorrow night. And then last but not least, on Thursday, it looks like we'll be getting our first renewal on the health insurance plan, which the preliminary news has been very good. We have a great group of employees who have understood the value proposition of this thing. So when it comes to ordering drugs in bulk from CanaRx and saving a lot of money that way and helping us participate in rebate programs that benefit the self-insured trust, everybody's really participating at a very high level. Douglas is pretty much outperforming the other towns in terms of the engagement of our employees. And that's nice to see. This is probably one of the single most important factors into coming to a final budget that we can publish for the finance committee to give a more detailed dive on and for this board to consider whether it's your final proposal or not. The swing could be, you know, the five-year forecast calls for a 6% year-over-year increase. Right now, it looks like we could be between 2% and 3%. So we'd be cutting the expected increase in half. And after last year's 1.4, that's two years of single-digit, you know, not even getting to 4% over two years. Prior year was 10-point something and it was 11. So it's, it's been good so far, knock on wood. The one thing we always have to be mindful of with our high deductible HSA-supported plan is that a lot of our claims materialize in May and in June. Because people, they chew through their deductible and they use their HSA to cover it. Then they schedule work for the end of the year. So if they have trailing expenses associated with the surgery or other healthcare needs, they go right back to their HSA and their deductible after it rolls over and gets replenished. So the people are strategizing how their costs work. It's an intelligent behavior. But what it does is it takes our claims, instead of making it kind of flat over 12 months, it kind of makes it look like this. So, but right now, we're holding steady at our target rate and that's good news for the town. So next Tuesday at FinCom and the following Tuesday with you, I'll have a final update on what that's gonna cost.
I remember when we were excited about 11%.
It really is remarkable. I mean, we presented you with the healthcare crisis and it was running out of control. And you just through talking with other people, what we found is that there's solutions out there to be had.
You know, to their credit, a lot of this came from a couple of guys that I had worked on health insurance in my Rhode Island assignments. And there were cost-saving measures that we had used there. And they came up and visited me here and said, well, we want to try to do something slightly different in Massachusetts, different state, different things. That's, we shopped that around to a couple of different communities. And then really ultimately, it was Webster that really took the initiative to put together a group because they were of the view that they could save a lot of money by switching their administrator, their fully insured, that, their fully insured. The administration of their self-insured plan was a commonly known carrier. And it was just opaque to them. They didn't understand what was going on, why the rates were changing. And when we finally got together and formed a group, then we brought back in a lot of this knowledge from the consulting world. And Gallagher, I can't say enough good things about Gallagher. I think they've been fantastic. They have worked with our employees one-on-one. They've done case management when there are inevitably mistakes because healthcare plans are very complicated and not everybody understands every last provision. They've, when they've made a mistake, they've come right back and fixed it. And I can't say enough good things about them. They've been real professionals. And I think if the guys from Gallagher, and I'll probably have them come in at some point to do a real quick presentation, not to get into the weeds. But I think what they would say is that using the TPA model, a third-party administrator, and having that piece of it competitively bid is where we're getting all of the control over our data and our costs through the TPA arrangement and not a softer version of that, which was what was being used in Webster and Dudley Charlton School District. So they've done a real cool job and they've got us out there. We're not on the bleeding edge, but we are on the cutting edge. And it's, it's good stuff. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Nice work, Matt. Thank you. So like I said, to see a increase that's lower than what we'd anticipated, which was half of what our best-case scenario was four years ago, is, is good stuff. All right, do we have any old business?
Well, I came across an email today from April of 2019 where there was a correspondence, I think, between the town administrator and the town council regarding an entity that thought about buying the post office building.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And I know we talked about that a week or two weeks ago. Did anything ever come of that?
No.
No?
Died on the vine.
Okay.
Any other old business?
Nope.
Any new business?
I had one thing.
What do you got?
My wife called my attention the fact that there, other than the billboard at the fire station, there's no notice around town that there's an election. I know some towns have some standing signs in front of the city or town hall. Maybe we should have something for all elections to...
Vote today?
I know...
You got this fellow down here sitting next to the tree waving at you.
Yeah. I know the fire station changes their sign, which is up by family convenience. And then we have the road sign, but I think that's currently doing that DCR talk.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't hurt to get some additional signage around town.
Having just a follow-up, what Hal said, I ran into the town clerk when I got here today. She said turnout is very high.
That's good.
Yep, it is good. Always a good sign.
So, because very seldom do you have a hard time finding a parking space at the municipal center.
Right.
So, all right. So, Mr. Bonin, I'd be looking for one of your...
Motions?
Yeah.
All right. That would make a...
The famous Bonin motion.
All right. I'll make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of interest in real property and to talk collective bargaining and then to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Hughes, aye.
Bonin, aye.
Morris, aye.
Davis, aye.
Cortez, aye.